Meeting is now in session. Honorable Mayor, Jeff Mason, the Senate.
Thank you. I will call an order of the January 14th meeting of the county commissioners. We will start with prayer, and I've asked Mr. Jason Stewart to open us in prayer.
Bless the prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we number the God before you tonight, dear Lord, just to give you thanks for the glory and honor, dear Heavenly Father, for the blessings you give us each and every day of our life, dear Heavenly Father. Dear Heavenly Father, would you say should be with the ones that are sick and shut in tonight, dear Heavenly Father, would you step them up to you, dear Lord, and ask you to be with families tonight, dear Heavenly Father, may have lost loved ones over the holidays, dear Heavenly Father, and know you are a great comforter, dear Lord. Dear Heavenly Father, would you say should be with us tonight as we attempt to conduct the county's businesses, dear Heavenly Father, and just ask your leadership and your guidance, dear Heavenly Father, in the decisions that we make, dear Heavenly Father. Dear Heavenly Father, would you say should continue to bless this great county that we live in, dear Heavenly Father, would you just ask for your protection and your guiding hand over this great nation that we live in, dear Heavenly Father? Would you just ask you to continue to be with us, dear Heavenly Father, throughout our life, dear Lord? Most of all, we're so thankful, dear Heavenly Father, for the blessings, and as of always, I'm so thankful for the salvation of my soul, dear Heavenly Father, and all these things that are in Christ Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Reese, would you lead us in our pledge?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, would you do our roll call for us, please?
Jason Powell.
Here.
Lynn Reese.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Here.
Daniel Krebs.
Here.
Dalton Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Meechey.
Here.
Erica Abel.
Here.
Ron Schumake.
Here.
Ron Cowan.
Here.
Linda Nixon.
Here.
Kobe McKinney.
Here.
Barbara Knapple.
Here.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Vane.
Here.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Dennis Hackett.
Here.
Thomas Gibbs. David Gross.
Here.
Frank Litterd.
Here.
Twenty-three present, thank you Stacy. Thomas had sent a word that he has a stomach virus, so we told him to stay home, didn't want that. Thank you Stacy. I would also, before we get started, I would like to recognize our youth leadership people in the back. I know, I was told today that some of you guys may have homework you gotta get to after a while, so I wanna go ahead and, if you'll stand up and if you're on part of youth leadership tonight. Those three on the front row right there may be trouble. But, thank you for coming, thank you for being a part of that, it's a great thing, and we look forward to you being leaders of our counties one day. All right, a reminder about next Monday is Martin Luther King holiday, it will be a holiday that we observe as a county. Our offices will be closed, but if you don't have anything to do, and it's cold and rainy, we do have a project that day. And Ms. Barbara, if you'd like to kinda fill us in on that?
Yeah, we do that every year for those that can be involved, and we've had some really good numbers over the years. It's probably getting close to 20 years, I think, that we've been doing this as a community. It's part of the Keeps Smith County Beautiful Committee that does that, but it's lots of different groups in the community that come together and make it a day on, not a day off. We've done lots of litter pickup over the years. We have a special project that we're gonna work on this year that there are trash receptacles that have been donated to the county, and so we're gonna get those sanded and refinished so that we can put them out in the community and reduce litter in our community, but also teaches our kids as we're working side by side with them to serve their communities. So, the most successful one that I think we've had in many years is when our county commissioners got involved in their communities or in their districts, to allow and get people to come out and look at target areas in your district. So, we'd love to have our county commissioners involved again this time, but anybody that can bring their family or whomever, if you need scholarship, community service hours, whatever, you can definitely get those that day. We'll provide a light breakfast and we'll provide lunch, so we meet at the chamber at 9:00 a.m., and then we'll go back there at 1:00 for lunch before we dismiss, so I'd invite you guys to take part.
According to the snow, because according to weather forecast, it's gonna be snowing.
We haven't canceled in 20 years, we have not canceled in 20 years, I'll just say that. And we've had some tough, pretty tough people out there. Little, you guys know Ms. Marilyn, that everybody in the community knows, she's out there at age 80 picking up trash in 20-degree weather, so if she can do that, the rest of the scan. But yeah, we haven't canceled so far, but this year, we are committed to be inside, I think, so we will do that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Tonight, we have Senator Mark Pody and Representative Terry Lynn Weaver, and they, Mark had called me this morning and called our office and wanted to address you, and it's not on your agenda, but we felt like it would be a good thing for those guys to come and address us. They're starting their new session, so maybe they can give us an update on what their goals and plans are and how it impacts our county. Mr. Pody? I don't know if he's carrying a suitcase or a cooler.
So, how do I do this? I don't wanna put my back on everybody, you're just like, just come over here.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, I'll do that. We're honored to be here today to just mostly just listen and listen to you, and it's honored to serve you. So, we are, of course you know, we started session last week, we are in go mode, our committees have been assigned. I currently will be serving as sub-chairman of the Safety and Funding Committee on Transportation, and I also serve on education. And again, I will thank you for what you do here and how you work hard for Smith County. We are here to serve you as well on the state issue, so do not hesitate to contact myself or Senator Pody as we move forward, and looking forward to working with the new governor. And we're very excited about what Tennessee is on its way to doing from good to great. So, thank you for laying this field. And my debat will introduce Mr. Pody, who he has some, in which we have some information for you that I guess we're gonna leave back there if you wanna go ahead and grab, or do you want me to hand those out?
If you'd hand these out, I appreciate it.
Other, while you're chatting about it, I'll do that.
So, you know, I'd love to come and address you all twice a year, and at the end of session, I wanna come back and report to you what was actually passed and get feedback of whether it was good or bad and in which county. I'm here to work for you, as Terry Lynn has, we represent you. But before we go in session, the mayor was gracious enough to let me come and hear back from you all. So, if you have private acts that you're thinking about doing or public acts, we wanna be able to carry that legislation for you. So, if there's something in this county that we need and you need, Representative Weaver and myself aren't here to actually carry that for you, and we wanna be very, very progressive, we wanna be here to hear that on the front end, get it to the attorneys that we need to, so we don't get it, miss a deadline or something like that. I will tell you, if we were to report back to you, last year, the note, as much money as came to the county, it was actually up this year. This year, fiscal year, we actually gave about $85,940,000 came back to the county, and we're passing these out so everybody can kinda see them, and in every single category, the amount of money that came was up. So, I'm gonna tell you that Representative Weaver and myself, we wanna make sure that this county gets its fair share of the money, whether it be in transportation, whether it be in health, whatever it is, we're here to make sure that we can get that back to Tennessee, back to Smith County. The other thing I wanna tell you is some of the things that are happening, I actually went to fight to be on transportation and on aid. I wanna make sure that our rural counties are being represented well, and I can tell you some of the things that the governor's kinda passed on, that he's gonna be looking forward to be doing this year, is increasing broadband. We need more broadband here, we need it in Smith County, and I wanna make sure that we get it. Agriculture advancements, we wanna make sure that those things are being taken care of as well, and something else that's happening, the drug abuse, opioids. We're gonna be focusing on what's happening a lot in the rural counties as well, to make sure we get the things that we need to help get the treatment that we need, and that the money's there that we can, that we can help do that. I don't know, Mark, you're doing a great job, but we wanna make sure whatever we can do, we can bring that here, we wanna do it. But, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd just love to see if there's any questions or anything that you all have for me or from Representative Weaver that we can carry back.
That's fine, anyone have any questions or stuff that everyone talked to?
Mayor and I would talk about this with our wish, what one of the first things brought up was the broadband.
Yes.
Your desire to be in this county, to be in a white car, to basically school kids, and fellow people that are working from home and stuff, and here that's the...
All right, so I can tell you that we did put $45 million aside for that, wasn't even a drop in the pocket, what we need. We need more money, we need to get it to the rural counties. If we expect to get the jobs and technology and the healthcare that we need, we need to have that, we need to have it here, we need to have it done faster than what we've done in the past, and I believe that our current governor or our governor-elect is gonna be focusing on that as well. That's why that was one of the very first things I mentioned. All right, and somebody else had a question? Yeah, Mark?
We talked about this last year and in the past, but I'm still interested in, from the Georgia coalition perspective, underage tobacco, we'd like to look at preemption again, if it's gonna be up, and local option on how, what laws we can make about tobacco.
All right, and the piggyback, and I will tell you that in the last budget, some of the smoking things that are preventive was actually taken out. So, there were several million dollars that was taken out of the budget, so it didn't, just crossed the board, and Governor Haslam actually just took it out, so it's not waiting to present. We're gonna try our best to see if we can't get some of that back and restore as well as we can do it. If we can help prevent, it's a lot easier to help prevent things than trying to cure them instantly.
Exactly.
So, I'm with you on that, if we can do some prevention.
And vaping, is there any going to be anything on vaping, do you think, any legislation?
There will be some.
There's a guy dropping in here.
All right, there will be some, I don't know what it's gonna look like though. All right, so I can't say, I've not seen the legislation yet, but I believe there's some that's gonna be filed.
All coalitions are looking at that.
Okay, especially for people under 18?
And 16.
Okay, great question. Yes?
I guess mine kinda piggybacks on the broadband. Such as, I believe it explains to me why upper common rail electric can't just turn on fiber in the county. It's something to do with certain service providers, if there's more than one in an area, there's a law on the books, and it's related to that?
Yeah, so part of it, there was an agreement made, I believe through some of the parties, they all got together, and they said that they wanted to wait this year and do more things next year, and so they actually said, we wanna pass the $45 million, they came to an agreement at that point, and they said, we'd like to actually put it off until 2020. I believe, though, that we need to see what we can't do to move that forward this year. Okay, so we want to be working on something to move it forward this year.
Where do things stand on Medicaid expansion?
Okay, so Medicaid expansion, we've got to do something for the rural health, for example, the hospitals and such, we don't want our hospitals closing. So, we did pass some things for the, to get some money to our rural hospitals, we've gotta find a way to make them a little bit more profitable, and whether it's gonna be the expansion of what Governor Haslam proposed, it's not gonna go through, but we're presenting, and we're actually going to Washington, D.C. to say, please give us a block grant of that amount of money, so we can accept that money and spend it the way that we wanna spend it in Tennessee without the stress. So, we are asking for that money to come to Tennessee and block it forward. Okay, yes?
About a year, a couple years ago, Terry Lynn has all signed a piece of paper for us, her back to the, with her petition for the sale of the wide and highway 83, I think it was, and...
I'd say 258 and 53 all combined.
Yes. Well, where do we stand on that right now?
Currently, we are awaiting our new commissioner, but that being said, we have, all you guys have sent me, the city council, Corso City Council, and the county commissioners have sent me the resolutions, all those are in place, we've been talking with T.D., and those discussions are still being made, still going forward. As soon as our new commissioner is addressed, that gentleman or woman, we don't know yet, will come out here and we will put them right on the exit during school hours for the Bordensvilles and all the people who are going to work, and the traffic is at its intensity. But I have been proponent for that, it was first brought up to T.D. at the end of 2017, so all ears are on that, I'm awaiting the commissioner and get that rolling. I think I sent to various members, if you haven't gotten, I can get you a copy of the proposed template or model, what it will look like, and it currently would mirror what has been done or what hasn't been done on the Bell Road exit in 24, where they extended five, added two lanes that carved out underneath the interstate bridge on it's at 258, and it'll be five lanes from the four-way where the cornerstone restaurant is all the way to the industrial park. That is what they're currently proposing at now, at 10, I think a $10 million budget, so that's what they're going, but we'll see. I mean, it may mean that we need to advance that and maybe do a different kind of traffic flow than what was proposed, but the good news is, is all eyeballs are on it, and we are definitely working to improve that exit. That answer your question?
Okay, I would think as a commitment, outside of money, outside of getting money here, I think the number one hard thing that we're trying to do is that exit in this county. So, if there's one thing that I had to say, what is the number one thing that we're trying to, it's exit 258. Terry Lynn's already been leading on this, she's already gotten a lot of groundwork done, so that is something we're working on. Mayor, thank you so very much, we appreciate the time, okay?
Thank you, thank you for telling me. You guys are good, because I had my list and y'all hit every one of them, but the two top ones for me for economic development and growth is the I-40 ramp and the broadband, and whatever you need from me, I will be there for you on that one.
Also, here's some more info on economics, stats, if you wanna grab those, remember.
Thank you very much.
What do they say down there, on education, safety, and maybe funding for officers and support, anything in the plans for that?
Yes, there is, they're talking about how we can get ASRO officers funded for this year, okay, so that, and we're talking about trying to fund that at the state level?
Be great.
So, we can get them, I mean, there's so many priorities we have, but the safety of our kids, we send the kids to these schools, you know, we expect them to be safe, our law enforcement do a great job, they're already spread so thin and such, so if we can help with some of the ASRO officers, help fund some of that, I think that's one of the things that we're looking at right now.
Will take it.
All right, thank you all.
Thank y'all, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the November 13th, 2018 commission meetings. Everyone, I'm sure, has had a chance to look those over, are there any questions or corrections? If not, I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Who's the second? David Gross. I have a motion, any discussion to that motion? If not, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, number eight on the list is a discussion of our interlocal agreement between Smith County EMS and Putnam County EMS, and Mr. Jeff Crockett will give you a quick presentation or let you know what that is, and...
First thing I need to do is make a correction on the date. You can see that in our overall agreement, I dated that June 3rd, 2018, that should actually be 2018, I thought yesterday. What this is briefly is the upcoming healthcare coalition have, in about the last year, they have acquired a newer school bus and had it retrofitted and equipped to use in disaster situations where you can transport up to 12 patients in that bus, and if you have a disaster type situation. This interlocal agreement was drawn up by the county attorney there in Putnam County. Putnam County's gonna be the home agency that keeps this bus, because they have the space in their garage base where they can keep it inside, and with it being a upper common regional asset, it's better suited to be in the center of the upper common, being there in Putnam County. So, what this interlocal agreement is for, they just want all of the 13 other counties in upper common to enter into this agreement, it's enough that it has to be notarized, I just wanted to make the county mayor, make you guys aware of the agreement that I am going to be signing and turning back in. And what this does by signing this, it allows me to be able to request the use of that bus in non-emergent situations. Now, if we have an emergency situation, some type of disaster, I could just make a phone call, vapor staff it and bring it to us, but as far as for large crowd, community events and that type of thing, it's gonna be available for that, and for me to be able to request it and go pick it up and bring it down here, we have to have this agreement in place. Got any questions?
Thank you. No action needs to be took on that.
Yeah, thank y'all.
All right, next is number nine, is a presentation by Mr. Steve Cobble recognizing the five new road and bridges committee meetings, Mr. Cobble, and I'll just say this right now, it is a blessing to see you stand and walk in here today, we are glad to see you.
Before you all.
I did not want to have to appoint a road commissioner in my first term.
I want your life, Paul. Thank y'all for your thoughts and prayers and calls and cars. The first thing I was gonna do tonight is we have five new members on our road and bridge committee, and out of District One, we have Jason Powell, out of District Two, Mr. Billy Bass, District Three, Daniel Krebs, District Four, Shannon Beechey, and District Five, Kobe McKinney. And we kept three of our old commissioners, or I shouldn't call you old commissioners, but Mr. Tommy Vane, he got the chair, and Mr. David Gross got the vice chair, and Mr. Charles Kent is the president. So, that's our new road and bridge committee this year.
Number 10 is a presentation about you for your tax questions, so if you wanna go ahead and talk about that.
All right, while I'm here.
Yeah.
This year's budget, the gas tax, the new gas to improve act, it generated $450,000 extra dollars for the highway department. And so far, this year with the $450,000, this is gonna take this segment, so be patient with me, I want everyone to have knowledge of what we're doing. Paradise Hills was four tenths of a mile long, it's brand new. Sullivan's Bend, and Paradise Hills is also oil and chipped. Sullivan's Bend was five and a half miles of B-modified, that's a hot material, a hot mixed material. Raccoon Branch was 1.1 miles, oil and chipped. Hump Circle a half a mile of oil and chipped. Frog Branch, 1.3 miles of oil and chipped. Dean Hill, we only were able to do the bad spots, so we did right at six tenths of a mile of Dean Eagle. Kip Hollow, the revenue was six tenths of a mile of just the bad spots, the whole road was just the worst of it. Powell Hollow, it is seven tenths of a mile. Martin Hollow, we did 1.7 miles. Judge Lane, half a mile. Moss's Bend, 1.2 miles, and we still like the backside of it, it goes to farmland. It's, I think, I went wrong, I think that Moss's is actually a raceway, beans and things down there, but no one lives back there, we kinda stopped right there to spread the money around further where people live. And Hales Lane was four tenths of a mile. So, we've done a total of 14.5 new miles of road so far this year, for a total cost Where I told you all, we used a hot material on Sullivan's Bend, a 5.5 miles, that was a B-modified. We, it was $207,303.72, that's an 18-year product, just like these state aid roads. Sullivan's Bend in Margaret are the longest, that's the longest county road in Smith County, it's about 13 miles through there. We have approximately eight and a half miles of it blacktopped right now, it's taken me two years to get that much of it. We did that, did just to try and complete it, and just as revenue comes in. The 83, that's what they all use on your oil and chip roads. It's about $137,950 of it, we have to have rocks to mix with it, the bad water, it's So, the total spending is $405,570.83 for 14 and a half miles of road. Paid roads are supposed to cost around $120,000 a mile, we're oil and cheap in roads for $22,000 a mile, and that's making the product ourselves. Been talking with the mayor, my father did it a different way than I did, the reason that we've changed is because of the equipment we have, it's so old, we're in the process right now of getting some prices on a new distributor, I'm gonna put my budget next year, go back to the old way we used to do it, if it saved three or $4,000 a mile, I'll do it that way. Out of the extra gas tax, we have about $44,000 left, and honestly, y'all, Apache Potoes right now, a lot of it, just condos all over the county, and I know it, y'all feel free to call me, I know they're there, I promise we're finding them as best I know. Couple weeks ago, every man I had, it's what you did for four days, every man had to face one of them, so we are trying. Couple phone calls, y'all just call me, I'll do all the kids, stay in the budget, and next year we'll actually get $550,000 in the improvement, and that's where it max out at. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Steve, the deal I heard, you better do anything to it.
Being attentive, now that the bridge is open back up, the state in the bridge, I've already told the families up through there, we will need to draw up, you know how many it is on the shoulders up there right now, the tires, which are the other families, I'm not just calling their names, but I told them we would cook. Yes, sir.
Steve, at the end of Bishop Hall Road north, where it was faked this last year, is there any way that we could get a bump sign there, I've had three people hit my fence already coming off of the bump?
We'll make it right there. I'll get the secretary to make a work, make your...
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Stevens, thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Next items are 11 through 16 are presentations of committee meeting minutes, we can pull those out and then vote on them visually, or we can group them and vote them as one, whatever you're doing.
Don't approve them?
We don't like to peruse the committee.
Okay, never mind then. You have them in your packet?
We both got questions.
Yeah, questions for anyone on the meeting, corrections or questions?
There's a slight correction on page 24.
Page, what page?
24, the solid placement for December 4th. I think at the top of page 24, the city's attorney should be David Bass, instead Danny.
Mr. Chairman, we caught that, and we, some of the copies are corrected, I think some of them may have worked out.
An email was actually sent out for those that can access your new email with the corrected copy.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Is that the only corrections or questions? If not, we'll move on to items 17 and 18, our presentations on our fund balance reports and our cash flows, and I'll let Ms. Daisy speak to those, if she wants to.
What you have in front of you are updated fund balances, the entire thing's done, we had audit work, we've not been related yet, but I was able to go back and put actual figures June 30th, 2018 ending figures in, and recapitulate those, if anybody has any questions, we'd like to answer best of hand.
Thank you, Daisy. All right, and cash. All right, item 19 is another presentation, it's just a letter of a reappointment of Jason Powell to serve on the Cordo Hole Utility District from January 1st, 2019 until January 1st, 2022. Item number 20 is ambulance service report, and we'll bring up Mr. Crockett it one more time.
What you have in your packet, the adjustment detail, the write-off report, what I did, I just wanted to get that to you, when I gave you the write-off report back in June, I believe it was, and I went through the first of May, so this is, this is the complete year, July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Just for you to have, there was a, an additional ninety-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars that was written off in that time period when I reported to you until it was filed last. And, uh, the other year report that you have, uh, that's given out to you, I think, prior to the meeting. I apologize. I thought I sent each of these as an attached email to space it, but apparently I never hit send on this second one. She informed me that. I got it to her again, and it was out of the packets. It's been delivered, so that's why you have it separate. Uh, really quick, uh, a year of EMS report for the calendar year, January first through December twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. Our call volume, we had a total responses of two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. Out of those, five hundred and forty-three were non-transports, and as you'll see right down below, what that means for those of you who are not aware. A non-transport call is a call where, uh, when we get there, the patient may refuse transport, or, uh, we respond to a structural fire, and there's no, uh, no patient there. We respond, stand by with fire department, no patient there. We go out to the public and see us to get folks up out of the floor. Every call will go on as a sign, a, uh, an OCA or a rod number, and, uh, of course, that's just goes along with that. Uh, total transports for the year were two thousand, three hundred and seventy-two. That's an average response of eight per day. And just, I put on there too, so you can compare last year. And you'll see that last year's numbers are quite a bit higher. That calendar year, January first through December twenty-eighth, seventeen. But I explained that to you in the paragraph below the difference, the total transports between seventeen and eighteen. Uh, those figures equate almost exactly to the launch of the three, uh, weekly regular dialysis patients that we transported for a long period. Uh, as we did not transport any of those in the calendar year of twenty eighteen. So if you take the, those three patients that we transported for several years on a regular basis, if you take them transporting three patients, three days a week. Of course, that's a trip, two dialysis and a trip back for each patient each day. And then you figure in, I just figured in kind of an average number of the amount of other calls involving those patients, regular doctor's office visits that we have transported to on their non-dialysis days and that kind of thing. Uh, it almost, it equates almost exactly to the drop in call volume. So we're really, we're really right at, as far as now, one call, another call, so right at where we were last year, really no, no big entries on that. Anybody got any questions?
And you'll see it later on. We discussed this at our last budget finance meeting. Jeff and I, I've been, he invited me to go to a meeting with him to up a com run, EMS directors. And, uh, at that meeting was the EMS directors, the billing agent, your billing agents.
The two ten care, him, so you know.
And two, and ten care representatives. And the discussion that day was about trying to figure out a way to get more money out of our ten care calls. Because, uh, we saw some statistics that, you know, we talked about these write-offs, but it's not really right, I mean, when you, as Jeff put it to me that day, when you bill somebody six hundred fifty dollars and ten care pays you thirty-seven, that's not really an indication of our bad debt collecting. It's just a nature of the beast to deal with with insurance.
Yeah, that year, write-off before is more or less a, that's where A and B and Martin were building companies, just what you, what you might say, cleaning the books up.
Yeah. And we're working on, Jeff and, his group are working on with some of the state legislature, and we're going, supposed to go down there and meet with them to try to help with that as well.
I can tell you, we're doing all we can do to try to get the revenue improved as much as we can. And we had, I was in a meeting, all day today, the entire meeting did not pertain to that, but over half of it did. And we actually, the director association has a, uh, schedule. It's not scheduled yet. It will be, it'll be sometime in the first part of February. I don't have a date yet. But we're actually meeting with all of our legislators and the master to discuss that, see if we can get something going this year, try to help us solve it. Because as mayor, I tell you, he said it, that's one main reason. I want him to go to a meeting with me so he can hear it's, uh, uh, you know, our, our, our revenue being low, lower than what we like to be here. It's not, it's not just a Smith County problem. It's, it's our, every EMS director and up comes having same issues. We'll, we'll continue to work hard and try to get them improved.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Next will be, uh, number twenty is a coroner report.
Y'all look in your packet. I gave the states an updated copy, uh, up to, uh, December the thirty-first. We have forty-five thousand dollars. That was for the coroner budget. Uh, we've already spent fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty. Uh, we're already eight thousand, six hundred and fifty over. We've already done forty investigations in six months. We did, uh, forty-two cases, all of two thousand and seventeen budget year. So, uh, just a whole lot, nothing's changed. Uh, my investigators said they can get the district to sign, uh, if there's no primary care. Uh, our county medical examiner is Dr. Roper. And, uh, if it's not his patient, he's not signing the district. So they automatically have to go to the medical examiner's office where the forensic pathologist will do an autopsy and then sign the district. So if you can, if you look up there, you'll see that we did in the first quarter, nineteen total investigations, and in the second one, we did twenty-one. So, um, of course, I got the budget finance, and we, uh, talked about moving some fundage. But like I said, I'm looking for at least, I actually did another case. You can add in with that, make that forty-one cases. Uh, did one last Friday, so, uh, I said, so we can't really determine. We've had a bunch of odd and in, what I would call odd and in days, that it's not, not normal in enforcement county. But you're also looking at a lot of, uh, people that's moving, that don't have primary cares. So that's, that's another issue we're running into. So if anybody's got any questions?
Is this uptick in cases for two thousand and eighteen, is it related primarily to drug overdoses?
Actually, we've seen a, uh, not many from overdoses. Uh, it's been, it's been kind of low. I have to go back and pull some, some cases, but it's, it's been, it's been low. Considering the two thousand and seventeen, I can say that it's a little bit lower now.
And I brag on Terry because no matter if I want to hear it or not, he gives me the news on what, he's doing new ones and on, and so, thank you, Terry, for what you do. All right, next is the rescue squad EMA report. That'd be Mr. Sonny Carter. I, 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 I looked at him when that phone was going off a minute ago, but it wasn't a disco music. It wasn't disco music, so it wasn't theirs. Normally, it's his disco music.
That happens in church, not here. Everyone, uh, they got a, uh, packet in your packet, just from the Smith County Rescue Squad. Give them something different this year. Uh, if you've got, look for, have a chance to look at it. Uh, if not, I hope you do, uh, take the time to look at it. We did a five-year summary of our history of what we've done, uh, in the last five years, and we have response, calls, and things like that. Grab show, uh, just how the percentages are working, uh, with the rescue squad. The one thing that I, uh, want you to really pay, uh, close attention to when you look at this, if you haven't already, is the second page, at the second paragraph, uh, the first sentence. And that figure, of course, three dollars and forty-three cents, has been on the one for several years. Uh, we haven't, uh, changed whatsoever. So I feel like, in my opinion, that's a very low price, uh, it costs the county taxpayers to have a rescue squad, uh, in, in this county. And to have what we have out there, uh, in our organization. Uh, we couldn't, couldn't do it if it wasn't for y'all. But just below that second paragraph, spitting that up, that's, uh, if I'm fair and correct, that's four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that we spent over the past few years. That thirty thousand dollars, and some of you commissioners, uh, doesn't know how this work may be or something, but, uh, each year, the county donates to us thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars that we receive from the county is earmarked just mainly for our construction and equipment, uh, for our facility out there. Uh, we've done a forty, uh, two hundred square foot addition. I think when we figured it roughly, what all we've added, it was about twenty-nine dollars a square foot it cost us. Uh, once we got that paid off, and it is paid off, we're able then to buy a larger rescue truck, uh, to replace our very much overweight and overstocked truck that we were having problems with. And you see that, it's cost about thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And then we were able to purchase a second set of tools to match the set we already have, Homatron, is what we use. But we had to upgrade because, and it'll explain all of that in this, uh, handout that you got, is why. A more modern app because the, the metal and stuff, construction of cars change all the time. So we're trying our best to keep up with it through training and through equipment, and, and we do a lot of training. Every two years, we have to do vehicle extrication training. Uh, every year, we have to be Vanessa K free, now that to keep up with the things that are, that are going on. Anyway, you see what the cost of the tools were, that's increased tremendously. That forty thousand will affect me more exactly what we got. But that's what we started that with. And then, uh, we had to replace, uh, one of our trucks. It wasn't, uh, large enough to carry all the rope rescue equipment, things we had. And then last year sometime, we started having trouble with our water rescue truck, which was a donated ambulance from the Smith County Ambulance Service several years ago. And it was wore out, and we got it. And we kept putting money into it. Got the point now, it's cost us, so we had to go out and buy another vehicle, uh, larger, and to be able to keep all the equipment that we have in that. Uh, you see, that was a cost of about four, two thousand dollars. We're doing all that with this, this thirty thousand you give us each year. Uh, we're able to do that. If it wasn't for that, we couldn't, we couldn't do that. The other things that we do out there, uh, in, in, in order to keep us going, is we have our annual road haul. Uh, we're out here on the street, you know, asking for money to keep us going. All that money is earmarked for fuel, uh, maintenance, and, and things like that. Uh, we take any, any work from eighty-five hundred to, if it's a good year, a real good year, eighty-five hundred, ten thousand dollars. And like I say, we use a lot of that for, for training. Uh, we use a lot of our equipment that's not in this building and equipment, uh, or other equipment, like rope and stuff like that that we have to buy. All that stuff, and, and Jeff will tell you, you know how it is with medical stuff, and it's very expensive. Uh, the stuff that we buy is not cheap, and we don't buy it because it's expensive, and we want it. We buy it because we've got to have it, and it's expensive beyond anything we can do about that. Rope is expensive. And just for a perfect example, and I know you're in a hurry, but I want you to know, that just recently, we were using our cutter, uh, out by our rescue squad building. And in the process of doing what we're doing, one of the blades snapped completely off, and it swam across the bay. All right, we sent that tool to be fixed, and it would come back. The one blade was over nine hundred dollars. And we've got to replace both blades, because once you put a new one on there, they're set. Fortunately, the company that's doing that is going to donate the second blade, and they donated the blade. So you're looking, if we had to do both of them, and they didn't do that, plus labor, you're looking for two thousand, twenty-one, hundred, twenty-two hundred dollars. So, uh, it is very expensive to do, do that, but, uh, that's, we've got to have a proper rescue squad. But there again, thank you all very much for the thirty thousand you give us. You know how much we appreciate it. They're telling you welcome to do it. And like I tell y'all every year when we meet up here, anytime you want to see what we've got out there, you're more than welcome to call me. If you have any questions about this whatsoever, call me. I'll meet you out there. We'll go through it. We'll show it to you, and, and be glad to talk to you. Anything else?
Sonny, I completely, I really appreciate the job y'all do.
Thank you.
Quick response time, accurate, and you showed the pleasure.
Thank you.
Everybody appreciate it.
And, and that's another thing, real quickly, our response time, if you abolish our organization, and you'll see in this back here, uh, it's, it's, it's very good, uh, to abolish our organization, to have a response time like that. And, and we're hoping to get better somewhere down the road, but as we're out there, we just, we've got to do what we have to do and all that. Uh, like I say, we enjoy what we do. Appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonny. Thank yous are nice lunches. Thank yous are nice lunches better. Thank you, thank you, Sonny, for what you do. Uh, next is item number twenty-three, and that will be our sheriff's department report. Ms. Hopper, would you come and give us that? You don't want to follow Sonny anymore.
Yeah, I need more from Sonny from now on. Getting back to you guys, and this is, uh, July first of twenty eighteen to December thirty-first of twenty eighteen. A total of eight hundred and three people have been through the process through our day. Our average daily inmate count is a hundred and thirty-seven. The highest daily inmate count between those times was one fifty-five, and the lowest was a hundred and twenty-two. Our daily average of the state inmates is fifty, and we're currently receiving thirty-nine dollars per inmate for the state inmates and those that we house for other counties. During that same timeframe, we responded to a thousand and five calls for service, two hundred and forty-seven red calls, eight hundred and fifteen transports, forty-nine welfare checks, eighty assists to other agencies, a hundred and seventy-four alarm calls, forty-six nine-one-one hang-up calls, two hundred and seventy-eight motors to see us. Processed eight hundred and fifty-five silver papers, and made two hundred and ninety arrests. And we currently have sixty-one full-time and five part-time employees.
That's just six months, right? That's just six months' work, right?
Six months, yeah.
Any other questions for sheriff? Thank you, sheriff.
Sheriff, do you need a question?
No, no.
Thank you, sheriff, for what you guys do. All right, number twenty-four would be our sales tax report. Do you have a page of that, fifty-five? Is there any questions on that? Daisy? And then your dad, they seem to be up a little this year from last year, so that is a good thing. Any questions on the sales tax report? All right. Back to you, Mr. Cobble, and information on Enigma Road and Jenkins Hill Road.
We started having an Enigma, uh, district gate. The commission's a district gate. Uh, Enigma Road has got some terrible trouble. It's got a wet weather spring going off the hill, and the hill is falling weekly. The mayor was good enough to go with me, uh, just look at the problem. He said, it's kind of like Harson Pike was, uh, six years ago. He said, we'll take the major equipment that we did not own at the highway department. Uh, I have actually contacted the elderly group, the Crockett, and Phillips, to see if they were interested in submitting deeds of what they thought it probably cost, or not even interested in being known. So I have gotten with the landlord by the name of Mr. Peter Huff, who's in Wilson County. They're telling me the road used to be on the, on top of the hill. I was a child. I don't even remember. I don't know when they moved this road, before my time. But Mr. Huff is, is being very open-minded about it. He could be of any assistance with his property, maybe. Maybe put the road back where it used to be back in the day. It's an ongoing process, but I just want, I may have with the district gate, and even the rest, I don't know, the others calling you. We are working on it, and Jeff is, Bob, we can also on this. Uh, as far as Jenkins Hill, I want Mr. Fred to better talk about it.
Simply put, we've been authorized, or I've been authorized to go forward against a landlord whose driveway keeps washing over into Jenkins Hill Road and is creating a hazard. Um, we didn't start out with wanting to do any form of lawsuit, but, uh, Mr. Cobble and, and his, his employees went to the gentleman several times, asked him to correct it. He's not corrected it. Um, I got involved. I've sent a couple of letters to him, and, um, so at this point, we don't have any other alternative other than to go out to, to address the issue through litigation. That's, that's where it is on, on that. Uh, we don't like doing it. It's not something that we, uh, make it as a habit. We all try to work with everybody. If it comes to care of our roadways, but in this instance, it's, it's one we've, we've reached an impasse on what we can do.
Thank you, guys. All right, that was twenty-seven through thirty are budget amendments. There is a, there is one correct, or two corrections you need to make there. The solid waste fund should be one thirty-one, and the how, no? The solid waste fund should be 131, and the, no?
The highway is.
Okay, yeah, but.
Resolution 3.
Resolution 3 is the highway, and resolution 4 will be the solid waste. Sorry, that's, that's, that's the only change. But those are your, your budget amendments, we can group those together, or we can vote on them separately, just your, your.
Make a motion to group them all together.
Okay. All right, motion is made to group these budget amendments together. I will take an emotion, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Who was that? Chance had the motion approved? Second?
Second.
Second, Ron Schumate. All right. All right, Stacy, roll call, please.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Leon Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Krebs?
Yes.
Thornton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Toby McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knapple?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Whittard?
Yes.
Motion passed, you're answered, thank you. All right, item number 31 is resolution number 01201905, and it is a request for approval of Smith County road list, with the 285 feet taken off River Bridge Road and Yules Lane added on pages 61 and 72 of those. Any questions on the road list for this year? David Gross, motion approved?
Second.
Second, Shannon Michie. All those in favor of the road list being approved? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, items 32 and 33 are more surplus items, and we are going to get rid of, we are going to have a surplus auction here pretty quick, but if you would like, we'll group 32 and 33 together for those list for that. Any discussion on surplus items list? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that list.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chance is, who's the second? Dennis. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Item number 34 is the removal of Jason Powell as deputy county medical death investigator, and the appointment of Blake Wood as deputy county medical investigator. Items 34, 35, and 36 are just committee updates and new appointments. Resolution number, or item number 35 is the appointment of Barry Coon as the industry representative to serve on Smith County Emergency Communications Board, and these were, I'm talking about Jackie Carver. Resolution number, or item number 36 is charity delogear Hubbard as a postal service representative to serve before he was born on Smith County Emergency Communications Board. If you don't have a problem with it, we will group those as well. Any discussion on those resolutions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Go in and, all right, any discussion of the motion?
Who's second?
All right, Jason. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number 37 is a resolution, and it's a request for approval for Smith County Highway Department to distribute excess waste to the landowner or surrounding residents from where the waste was gathered. And Steve, if you want to kind of explain what that is in your turn?
All this going back to where rideaway's got such a big issue in the last year, year and a half. When we go out and clean out dishes and all, we've always given, Mr. Better, I want to use you, if Mr. Better lived on a carrier road, and we picked a ditch out here to Mr. Harper over there, and Brandon wanted the dirt, I, I had rather prior administration, literally give you that dirt, and the truck get all the way back to the horse, look up it out of pile, and then drive back the dirt, it's, it's, it saves the time, it saves the fuel. Honestly, the dirt came off these things, was prompted down into these ditches anyway, it was probably their dirt to begin with, but where it all comes from is the capital, and it's all about staying on the rideaway. Whenever I take this dirt, and I can back through a gate, or back through a yard, and my bill brought it away just for a second, but if I could get a resolution saying I could give this dirt away, instead of trucking it back to the water all the time, it would save thousands of dollars a year, y'all, and all sorts of man hours. But I just need a resolution passed that I could legally do that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion of that motion, or questions? Who's second at that? Kobe, okay. David, question. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Youth leadership, you are dismissed, if you need to go home and do your homework. Thank you for coming, and hopefully, we didn't bore you, and you learned something, so congratulations on that, and keep, keep up the hard work. All right, item number 38 is a resolution to request approval to apply for the CDBG grant, and Virginia's here, and we're planning to meet with Mr. Jackie Carver in the morning, he's got a need possibly coming up for a tanker truck for the central unit, Central District Fire Department, and we decided that, well, we've, we thank Mr. Crockett for always going for an ambulance, but we, he decided this year that he felt like he was, he went there too many times and was ready to move on, so we, we're going to try for tanker truck for Mr. Jackie Carver in Central District. And she and Mr. Carver and I will have a meeting in the morning to discuss that and get that process started, if you guys pass this resolution. Are there any questions on that resolution?
Motion to approve. Select.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Item number 39 was, we were going to have an updated safety committee tonight for you, but we did not get that complete, that will be in March on that one, so we'll move that. All right, item number 40 is the election of the notaries, you have that in your packet. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who's, who's the motion? Dennis took motion, and Ron the second, all right?
Cowan or Schumate?
Schumate. All right, I have a motion to approve, any discussion?
Who's second?
Ron Schumate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The notaries are. And it brings us to item number 41. Tommy and Dennis. There you have it, thank you, gentlemen.